Yeah, it was a little early to see that.
All right, it is six thirty-one on October first, twenty eighteen. This is a regular meeting of the Arlington City Council. I'm Mayor Richard Nagel, elector presiding at the meeting. And would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call. Councilmember Yashewski.
Here.
Councilmember Highland.
Here.
Councilmember Batchor.
Here.
Councilmember Haddelstead.
Here.
Councilmember Cowell. All councilmembers are present. Also, this evening, on my left is City Administrator Pat Melvin. On my right, City Attorney Ross Arneson, representing the Arlington enterprise. And the audience is Kirk Make. All right, with that in mind, we will look at the agenda. And I do have one change that I would like to propose, or I guess... Let's see if I can find it. I think there are too many agendas here. Go ahead. Why don't you just tell them what it is and where it's going?
Okay. We would like to add item right underneath thirteen, which would be to approve/deny hiring American Environmental for cleaning and televising lines near Chandler and Six at four hundred and eighty-five dollars an hour. In front of you, on the backside of the special meeting minutes for September twelfth, there should be an email from Lee Ortloff of People Services outlining several quotes that he has received for televising. So those two items are related.
Okay. Any other changes to the agenda? Hearing none, a motion is in order to approve the agenda as amended?
Motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Batchor, second by Councilmember Yashewski to approve the agenda as amended. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried. Moving on to the consent agenda this evening. It consists of four items. Item A, approval of the September fourth council meeting minutes. Item B, approval of the September twelve special meeting minutes. And item C, approval of the September seventeenth special council meeting minutes. And then lastly, approval of the bills.
Make a motion, we approve the consent agenda?
A second.
Motion by Councilmember Highland, second by Councilmember Haddelstead to approve the consent agenda as read. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion's carried. Moving on to item five, addressing the council. Is there someone scheduled to, or someone is scheduled to, address the council?
I did have Lindsay Voss stopped in with me following the significant rainfalls that we had a short while back and was possibly going to be coming to this meeting. However, she was not able to make it. She did ask that I inform the council about some concerns she has. She lives at three oh five Meadowlark Lane, which you can see there. Just one lot north of that corner lot. And does have a playground set in the backyard there. And she just wanted to express concern with the amount of water that backs up there and was hopeful that maybe the city at some point could do something to try and alleviate that. So her property address is zero twenty there. And you can see kind of the playground structure in the back. Obviously, the lot to the south is owned by the city and does flood. That is why I think we own the lot is to provide some area for the water.
Oh, this one is owned by the city?
I believe so. Is that not so?
No, I don't think so.
Oh, it is?
I think it's so.
The city owns that structure there in the corner, which is a, some kind of filtration unit.
It's the lift station, isn't it?
Lift station, yep.
For the sewage line from Green Isle.
Okay.
But...
But we don't own that.
The back of all those lots is in the floodplain, Highland Creek.
Down by.
Right, so, I don't know, with the city could do a...
Right, she's having water coming up from the creek. The creek rises and it comes into...
Comes out of the banks a little bit.
Well, she indicated that some of the water is coming across, but yeah, it's coming from the creek and also coming across. And it runs through that south property there and drains into the creek. Yep. So I explained that we've got, you know, with the rainfall that we did have, there were a lot of flooding issues. And that, you know, we were unfortunate that it wasn't going into a house or different properties, so.
They just bought that not all that long ago, so they're probably not used to what happens when we do get large rains and...
Yeah.
Well, that's prone for flooding there.
So the blue area, kind of the floodplain there, is that what I'm seeing?
I think it probably is because that tree line right there that you see, just, yeah, right there. That's kind of, the rest is lowland and then that comes up higher. But even so, I mean, I think I've seen water up to where that tree line is.
Tree line is?
Yep.
I would imagine, is this their play area or our athletic? Okay.
I don't think it quite comes up to their house, but it probably comes pretty close.
Yeah.
I mean, when it would get, when it gets really, really bad, like in spring, I'm sure it'll be knocking at their back door.
And we've had the neighbor to the north who had some issues with trees actually being washed into the river, the creek there. So I know he was working with some individuals to try and clean that out so that it doesn't continue to erode the shoreline there.
Okay.
So I just wanted to make you aware of that. And if Lindsay or Adam have additional concerns, they can certainly come to a future meeting and express those concerns directly to you, so.
Ross, what in any way would the city be, have to do with?
Well, I would say nothing if that's within the floodplain of Highland Creek. And I think it is. So it's not anything that's controlled by the city's storm source system.
No.
I would imagine when they bought it, they were aware that it was a floodplain?
That part was going to declare floodplain on the, you know?
Well, I mean, the way that that property sits like that, they're up higher than that southern lot. Even, you know, it goes, the elevation rises and rises where their houses or whatever. I mean, unless it was a really, really, really bad flood, I couldn't see it even getting into like their basement. I think they have a walkout basement. They're kind of like at the top of the hill or whatever. But even like where their playground is, that's still higher elevation than that southern lot.
So all the water they're getting up there is from the creek?
Creek, and what she told me was that the water was coming down along the back, the southern lot, but it was seeping in there and building that up. So a combination of both the creek and drainage coming through there.
Okay.
So Ross, do we own a portion of that south lot or is that...
That structure there, right in the corner.
Okay. The rest of it is Henness Arneson property, I believe.
Oh, okay.
Is that right?
Yeah, that's the one remaining lot that's unsold in the Green Meadows addition.
Oh, okay, okay.
Okay. All right, any other points on that or questions? Hearing none, we will move on to the announcements.
First item is the Arlington Fire Department's Fall Block Party, which is scheduled for October sixth, from five to twelve. Meal and music at the Heritage Building at Sibley County Fairgrounds. So I know that you can pick up tickets at a number of different places, including Hagan Miller Lumber, Automotive Tire and Repair, Why Not Plumbing and Heating, Maverick Automotive, and Steve's Coffee Shop and more. So ten dollars at the gate, advanced adult tickets are twenty dollars for the meal and entertainment. Children twelve and under are ten dollars. So please come out and support the Arlington Fire Department from five to seven on October sixth, five to twelve on October sixth.
I would just like to make a side note. Last Wednesday night, we had firemen appreciation for the council and townships and so forth.
And ambulance, actually.
And ambulance. And they served us the same pork chops they are serving Saturday night. And I said, "Don't change a thing." They were delicious, they were wonderful. Cut them with a fork.
Yep.
Second announcement is that the Zura Shriners Ho-Ho Area Shrine Club Breakfast is scheduled for Sunday, October seventh, from eight thirty a.m. to twelve at the Arlington Community Center. They'll be serving pancakes, potato pancakes, eggs, and sausage breakfast. So hopefully, individuals can attend. The cost for that is eight dollar donation for adults. Children six to twelve years are four dollars. And children under six years of age are free. The next announcement is for the League of Minnesota Cities Regional Meetings, which are scheduled for October fourth in St. Cloud and October twenty-fifth. Make special note, October twenty-fifth on your agenda, it says October fifth, but October twenty-fifth in Mankato. At this time, I'm aware that Mayor Nagel is interested in attending on October twenty-fifth. If anybody else has an interest, please let us know. The training goes from two thirty in the afternoon to seven and includes a variety of different topics, including regional economic vitality, legislative updates, update from league leadership, and then moving from conflict to effective governance and problem solving.
Forgot about the dinner.
Oh, yes, and the dinner at five o'clock. Don't forget the food.
Don't forget the food.
So if anybody's interested, please feel free to just reach out. And administration would be happy to get you signed up. Moving on to another announcement, Driver Improvement Program is scheduled for October twenty-ninth. There are several options available. One is the Four Hour Refresher Course for those who have previously taken the driver training program. That'll be from five thirty to nine thirty on October twenty-ninth. If you have not taken the program previously, you are required to take a longer version, which will be held on November twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth from five thirty to nine thirty each evening in the Arlington Community Center. Individuals who do go through the driver training program are encouraged to contact their insurance and they may be eligible for a reduction in the cost of auto insurance. Call one eight 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 two three four twelve ninety-four or email www dot minnesotusafetycenter dot org for more information and to register. The last announcement is the Arlington Chamber of Commerce's Fright Night, which is scheduled for Wednesday, October thirty-first, from five thirty to seven p.m. It will be occurring on both sides of the street, on Main Street from Highway five to First Avenue. There'll be a haunted house, free food, and games above the dugout. So come with your ghosts and your goblins. That's the end of the announcement.
All right. Thank you. Any questions on the announcements? Hopefully, there's some of you that are interested in joining me on the twenty-fifth afternoon and evening for that regional meeting. Item seven, communications.
We are very happy to let you know, councilmembers, that Minnesota Municipal Power Agency, the group that manages our electrical system, comprised of members that include Anoka, Brownton, Buffalo, Chaska, East Grand Forks, Elk River, La Sure, North St. Paul, Olivia, Shakopee, and Winthrop, has been upgraded for their bond rating. Fitch has upgraded MMPAs, Minnesota Municipal Power Agency, from an A to an A-plus. Also, Moody's has upgraded MMPA from A-two to A-one. So this is a positive reflection on the company which manages our municipal power system here in Arlington. Part of the reason for receiving the upgrade includes their retirement of more than thirty-two million of debt in two thousand seventeen, including the prepayment of twenty-two million of its two thousand settlement bonds. So they are taking a very proactive approach to paying down debt and in doing so are providing a good service to you with your electrical system. Are there any questions about that? Moving on to the next item, which is the Minnesota Department of Commerce notification of proposed guidance for determining normal maintenance activities and conservation improvement plan review process for electric utility infrastructure projects. I received in the mail from the Department of Commerce notice that the staff is putting together a recommended guidance concerning the utility requirements of Minnesota statutes, section two sixteen B, point two four one subdivision one C, about how electric utility infrastructure projects must result in greater, must result in increased energy efficiency greater than that which would have occurred through normal maintenance activity. Basically, what this is, in a nutshell, is that electrical utilities are required to have a conservation improvement program. And in doing so, they are allowed, when they make improvements to their system, to go ahead and count that towards their requirement. One of the questions that has been raised is, at what point is it considered normal maintenance versus a conservation improvement project? And so they are setting out some specific guidelines in trying to answer that question. I've got, I did not include the entire information in your packet, but if anybody wishes to read up about this, I would certainly welcome you to. So that's just a general overview of what it is. And I will have this information available if you'd like to look at it in more detail.
If I have insomnia some night, I'll come in.
The one for insomnia is coming next. A warmer upper. The next one is the Minnesota Department of Commerce Petition for Rulemaking regarding the Good Hugh Wind Truth Petition for Rulemaking for Wind Turban Siting Standards. Basically, what this is, is this is again, taking a look at what was, it's a matter that has been filed, the Good Hugh Wind Truth Petition, is looking for input in terms of how they cite large wind energy conversion systems. There's been some questions about the environmental impact and what is needed. Here again, I've got more information if it's something that you're interested in. The city of Arlington, simply because we are an electrical utility, was listed as a group to be notified. So a lot of statute clarifications and legislative changes being proposed right now with utilities. The third and last item is a Minnesota Public Utilities Commission notification of process to update Minnesota's statewide interconnection standards. The legislator has formed a group that has taken a look at what we currently require for interconnection standards. They have had a number of different meetings to try and more clearly clarify what is requested of individual electrical utilities. And so they've put together the one that I am going to send over to Jim that has, how many pages? It says...
Well, there's a couple cited, too.
Yeah, this one has quite a few. So this one will definitely take care of your... So those are the items that I present to you this evening for announcements.
Okay, thank you. Any questions on any of that? I'll let the ministry that Officer Knoxen has joined us this evening. Welcome, officer. At this time, we'll move on to item eight, Maintenance Department Update.
Rickworth. Good evening, council. All right. So getting right into it, we were able to get a full, the town swept before the big rain last time. I think that definitely helped. There's already getting to be a lot of leaves and a lot of debris from the summertime. So we didn't get a full sweep in already once. We got some curbs repaired along Second Avenue, where the, next to the school where the pavement is going to be put in. Also did three alleyway entrances along Second Avenue Northeast between Main Street and Alden, Alden and Baker and Baker and Clinton. Truckee Construction has been uptown, working on the pavers. I think they're probably over halfway done now. The weather has kind of delayed some of that, too. The new, we got a new women's door, women's bathroom door installed at the Lions Building by Hogg and Miller. The previous one was just in really tough shape and pretty much ready to fall apart. It was dilapidated essentially. So that got installed. We finished up Lions Building vinyl floor waxing, finally got that waxed. Had a couple catch basins repaired, one at East Main and Fourth Avenue and one at East Douglas and First. That was last week. And also, the curb is already poured back in on that, too. We had slabjacking done, various locations around town on sidewalks. We had a couple of curbs lifted where water was always pooling up. And they did the patios here at the community center, east and west patios on the south side, and also some of the sidewalks that were sinking badly around the community center. Second Avenue, still being finished up. I saw they raised the manholes this week, or today, and that should be paved this week and finished. Looking forward, October thirteenth is our tree planting with the four H. They'll be volunteering with us, along with Conservation Corps out of the cities who will be coming down and helping out volunteers. We're going to get crack filling done yet this fall. They contacted me last week. They thought this week they'd be in town doing that. Been in talks with Millers to do a little hot patching around town, too, yet. They plan on being open for a while yet this year, so that should not be a problem. I met with the slabjacker again uptown today to look at some spots on Main Street sidewalks that came to my attention. Now, Steve Truckee brought me up there, showed me some problem spots where there's trip hazards right up on Main Street on the sidewalk. So we walked around today and he gave me a quote on that. It's nothing too extravagantly expensive or anything, but there's a few spots that should be lifted and taken care of there, which he should be able to do. Along with that, I should bring up, Steve Truckee is concerned about putting work back into the pedestrian ramps and fixing those, which he was, he had quoted to fix four of those pad ramps uptown. And they take the worst beating in the wintertime when the bobcats are, you know, entering them and coming off them. There's a lot of broken brick in them. And he thinks it would be wise just to cement those as well as maybe a portion of the brick alongside each, you know, going around the curb itself. And he said he could do those for five hundred dollars apiece. Now, that's fourteen total, which would be seven grand, which we don't have in the budget to do this year. But the worst one is down by Main Street Stylist. That one's in really bad shape. And that would be five hundred bucks. And it's kind of on the end. Well, it is on the end. So it wouldn't look as ridiculous if we just start there this year. And then we should have, we should have the money to complete that next year if we would want to, if that makes sense to you guys. And the rest is staying brick, you know, the long runs up and down the blocks. But the pedestrian ramps would be cemented.
So is he currently planning on fixing those? Or would be good, there'd be some kind of cost savings if he did fix?
He's gonna, he'll fix them either way.
Okay.
That's in the bid. But it's going to be a big pain in the butt for him to fix it. And he thinks in a short amount of time, it'll probably have to be fixed again.
Right.
So long term, instead of putting the time and the hassle into it, it's just an idea, something to throw out there. But we can keep them away. They are too now.
So but you are proposing that one be fixed by Main Street?
Yeah. You know, after talking it through with him, I thought it made sense. So I would propose, if that's something you guys would, you know, maybe you want to put some more thought in before you make any decision, too. But we could at the very least start down at Main Street Stylist on the really bad one there.
I would imagine there's going to be a cost saving if he doesn't put in the, or re-level out that brick that's in there right now.
I think he did already, didn't he?
No, he hasn't.
He hasn't done it yet.
Well, the brick is, yeah, they're halfway. You're talking about the pad ramps, though, right?
Right, yeah, well, the one.
The one, if he did.
Because I mean, instead of him doing the work to it, are we going to incur more costs? Or is it going to be a wash?
It would, it would be more cemented now than what he, the time he'd put in to do that, to fix the brick. I told him either way, we need to fix. That's not the question, but...
Do you know what the cost difference is between the pavers and the cement?
I'm not sure on that.
What do you say, five hundred dollars to fix it?
Yeah.
Or cement?
Five hundred, four.
It would cement the pad ramp and then it would wrap around and go to the adjacent light pole, which is maybe twenty, fifteen feet, something like that. And then it would wrap around to where the bricks stop on the next section of sidewalk or something. Like probably fifteen feet on both sides.
Oh, okay.
Of the pad ramp would also be cemented.
But he didn't give a price for that?
Five hundred bucks.
I'd like to see the difference.
The difference in approach, okay.
And whatever that is, the council would need to okay that. City Administrator Melvin would have the authority to do that.
Would it be something that we're okay with? I mean, are having those cemented?
Well, you talked about having to do one this year and then the rest next year when it can be in the budget.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, I guess I just go back to, you know, my discussion on it before, where why are we spending all this money replacing those? And everybody wanted to replace them and have them put back in. So, you know, the thought was, is because of the... And everybody wanted to replace them and have them put back in, so, you know, the thought was is because of the, the, you know, wiring or what have you underneath. And to have the access, so.
But now we're just talking about the, the-
Well, no, he's talking fifteen feet on either side.
Oh. Would that be on each, each one? You're talking fifteen on each one?
Yeah.
So I mean, that'll drastically change the look or the, and if we're sticking all this money into it to have it brought up, I, I, I don't know. And at mortal cost.
According to him, it's, this is the second time it's ever been-
The third time now that it's been redone.
It is the third?
I think, that's what we all talked about, right?
I don't know.
Steve claimed it was the second, twenty, thirty years, whatever.
Ross, you have an office right next to it, do you remember?
I'd say it's, I'd say it's the second.
Second time. It was laid once and then now redone twice.
Yeah. This will be the second time. It seems like it's pretty durable, but those pad ramps take a beating, especially when it's soft, but we don't have to, we could keep them brick. It's just a-
They still have to be fixed.
They'll be fixed.
I think I'd like to, you know, be there and see it, see what's involved in it and how they look, but-
Okay.
Being most of it is not in the budget this year, maybe we just wait with the whole thing until next year.
Put it off and have them fix them, okay.
Yep.
Alright.
That's, that's my feeling. I don't know if the council agrees or what. That way we can take a little closer look at it.
Yeah.
I would agree.
Okay, then just finishing up on what's coming up. I talked about slabjacking some of the sidewalks up there, tree work, got plenty of that. Once the leaves start falling, we got fall street sweeping. We're gonna do some caulking, expansion joint work around a lot of the buildings down. And then hopefully burn our brush pile yet at the compost, which is getting huge.
Yeah.
So, any questions at all or?
I just, oh, go ahead.
At the library meeting, they mentioned there's some bat trouble that's been taken care of.
I called the guy the day that she told me about it. And that was two Wednesdays ago. No, one week, week and a half ago, he was gonna get back to me last Monday and that never has happened yet.
What was that about?
I gotta reach back up to him.
There's some bats in the library.
Bats in the library.
Bats in your belfry.
They're just coming for Halloween though. Then they're leaving after that.
As soon as the cold weather comes, they're gone.
And then on that, did she talk to you about carpet?
Uh-
Is that on the-
Briefly, but I don't know what was-
Was that on that state bid stuff? Is there carpet?
I have no idea.
Okay.
Could, I'll go ahead.
Maybe patch and look that up.
Yeah, we can check into that and see.
Could you give, I, I know it's not your jurisdiction. I know it, I, we have nothing really to say or do about it. But could you give us an update on Highway five and when or if the lines are gonna be painted on, on there?
Yeah, so I reached out to my contact with the state today and he's claimed this week or next week. Said their line machines are up north right now, should be finishing up whatever they're doing and should be down shortly.
They're not gonna spr- are they gonna spray the roadblock? I know sometimes they do. Are they just gonna put the lines on?
I guess I'm not sure. We putting lines on? I don't know about the black.
They need the lines.
Yeah, I, I just know that the visibility there is pretty poor, especially if it's wet or-
Oh, yeah.
Or at, in the evening.
I made a note here about the Christmas lighting on Main Street being, Arlington is coming up and the Christmas decorating is coming up. Are they some, be, planning on patching together again? I know they're getting in tough shape. The, the lights that outline the building.
Okay.
Buildings. Did it, cause we talked for two or, two or three years already about replacing.
Yeah, that was kind of just a brief discussion too, but, you know.
We were getting bids and everything. I wonder how much it would cost to replace it.
Yeah, I had a bid.
Right.
But it never went any further than that. I think we-
So I'm just wondering what kind of condition in for this year? Are you, you're sort of preparing to do some-
Probably in the same condition.
But they'll work.
Yeah, they, they work.
They work, okay, well, that's, yeah.
I might get a little shocked here or there.
How about, how about all our anchors on the buildings for the stuff to go across the street?
Well, yeah, that's a good question. Yeah, we should be checking those every time we're putting them up.
Yeah, cause I know last year that was a concern. There were some bad ones.
Yeah, well, I, I checked them and they were, what I thought looked bad from the street, they were-
Pretty good.
They were secure, yeah.
Well, as long as you check them.
So, yeah, they were really sturdy.
That's good.
I'll be replacing all those building bulbs, bulbs with LED this year, so.
Okay.
Kirby just said, just an update for you, Northland Drawing did inquire about maybe contracting with you to have you do some street, uh, street sweeping. They're trying to clean up their site a little bit, so I just wanted to let you know that I just-
Inside of their lot there or by the?
In their driveway in their parking area.
Okay.
So, I told them what the cost would be, your equipment and your hourly wage, so. Just in case, I told them to get in touch with Laura and then she would coordinate with you.
Okay.
So, just FYI.
Okay, any more questions for Kirby?
Um, Kirby, I think a week or ten days ago we talked, maybe longer, that you'd be putting up the snowball truck, the ninety-eight Chevy. Any closer on doing these with that?
We've been using it a little bit yet, but yeah, it's gotta be cleaned up and shaped up and it's on our, on our whiteboard to get crossed off yet, but yeah, it's, it's on our minds to get that up.
Okay.
So, soon, soon. This week or next, for sure.
Which leads me to the next question. We getting any bids on the fire truck pickup?
We're getting quite a few, actually. A lot of people are stopping and even as it's raining, people are stopping to get out of their car to come take a look at it. Right now, the battery isn't working on it. We're not sure if someone got in there and flipped a switch and so the battery is, is dead right now, but I think all it takes is a quick charge and it'll be right back, but we've had a, a lot of interest in it, so.
Do, do they ask to start it up?
Uh, some ask to look under it, some do ask to start it up.
Do we need to get the battery charged up?
That's what I was wondering.
No, we don't?
It's, there it is. It runs and it drives.
Okay, so no more, yeah.
It runs as far as we know, not they know.
Runs and drives and there it is.
Yeah, yeah, that's the way it's-
I don't want our staff going out there having to-
And I think that's the way it's advertised too, being so as is. It run, it starts, it runs.
Min- minimum bid is three thousand and we've had, we do have some bids right now and the cutoff date, I believe, I believe is October fifteenth.
Fifteenth, that's what I thought you had, yeah.
So.
So I guess to get to your concern, probably the only thing we'd have to be aware of is if the successful bidder tries to start it, when he, and it doesn't start because of that battery, we may need to do something.
Have some jumper cables.
Well, I mean, or the ba-
Or if it's got a dead battery.
If it's a bad battery, we'd have to put a battery.
Could have a draw on it too, no?
So, as is, you wouldn't put money into it though, right?
Well, but it says it starts.
If we say it starts and runs, it probably needs to start and run.
Yeah, 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 true. So, you need to be flexible at that time or, you know, aware that that could be an issue.
The new manhole covers, we're getting that new style we've said, have they been put in or are they the two going over here?
They're the two going over here.
Here in the intersection. They gonna get those done this fall?
Yeah.
I've been watching, anxious to see them.
I have too, yeah.
Okay, any other concerns, questions?
We're good.
Alright, thanks Kirby.
Thank you, guys.
Moving on to item nine, ordinances. First reading of ordinance, which is amending the storage of firewood within the city of Arlington.
Council members, at our previous council work session, we talked a little bit about the city code and we had the Police Chief Pedersen here who shared some, some concerns or some suggestions that he had for making changes. One of which was to remove the requirement that stacked fire would be limited to two cords. He felt that there were some individuals out there where they do keep it very neat and clean and that limiting it to two cords was not necessary. So, the planning committee had an opportunity to review that and is proposing an amendment to remove the two cord limit that we currently have in city code. So, this will be the first reading for that item. We will continue to have a second reading on October fifteenth and thereafter will make the change pending any public input on the issue.
Okay, any questions?
Well, of course. Reading the ordinance when they said two cords, now we talking two fireplace cords or two full cords?
Oh, there is a difference in measurement.
Well, and we're planning on taking, striking the two cords out, so.
Full cord is eight feet long, four feet wide and four feet high. The fireplace cord is one-third of that. So two cords would be sixteen feet by-
Eight, well, by four by-
Eight by four. So that'd cover quite a bit of ground.
Yes, that'd cover quite a bit.
And now we don't have to worry about that.
Well, if you're striking it out, they could put ten cord in there.
As long as it's neat.
Or throw in anyway.
I just wanted you guys to know my days with Paul Bunyan, that I knew all this.
I didn't even know Paul and I knew that.
I'm impressed, for what it counts, I'm impressed.
I learned it all in deep paving.
Okay, any questions on the change, firewood storage change? Hearing none, this will go in the record as being the first reading of that proposed ordinance change. Moving to the item B, first reading of an amendment to an ordinance which pertains to fires within the city of Arlington.
Uh, council members, Kirby, Winkworth had brought this to my attention. We do have an ordinance that addresses fires in that section. It prohibits any outdoor fires and that poses a problem at our compost facility when they're trying to burn some of the brush. So I did reach out to Attorney Arnison, inquiring what we, what he would advise us to do. Attorney Arnison did weigh in and indicated that we should put a statement into the code indicating that this section does not apply to the city of Arlington compost facility. So, with that in mind, Russ, if there's anything that you wish, wish to add to that?
Well, I think it's a fairly simple change. Administrator Melvin and I discussed this and I didn't feel there's any way the city could just, you know, grant a waiver of the ordinance. And so, you know, this simple change would take care of it.
Okay, so then the ordinance would, part A and B and C of the ordinance would stay the same, but at the, right at the beginning, it says these section, this section does not apply to the city of Arlington. Brush and yard waste dump site where occasionally controlled burns of accumulated brush may take place.
Do we have to add in, take place by the city of Arlington? So, I mean, add that we're the ones burning it rather than somebody-
Then if somebody else comes and sits the pile on it.
It doesn't say, I can't, it just says I can have a-
Maybe have by city staff.
By city staff, yeah. Where occasional controlled burns by city staff of accumulated brush may take place.
That would include the fire department if they're doing it.
Yep. Okay, is everybody comfortable with that change, that addition?
Yep.
Any other comments about that? Hearing none, who on record as being the first reading of that change regarding fires within the city of Arlington. Okay, item ten, resolutions. First one dealing with the cable franchise.
Council members, resolution sixty-three, two thousand eighteen includes extending our current agreement with MediaCom Minnesota LLC, which indicates that we are continuing with another year of belonging to the Cable Commission.
Uh, in discussion with MediaCom, franchisees typically like to have these agreements run a multi-year, but they've been involved in our considerations about detaching from the county Cable Commission. And so their proposal was just to extend their basic franchise agreement with the city for a year so that we can relook this issue next year again. And I guess it was determined that, in some discussions, that city staff at this point would have difficulty running our local access channels. And we didn't want to burn the city staff with that. I think that was one consideration for not mailing out of the Cable Commission this year. We have the option to do that every, I'm sorry.
That's right.
We have the option to do that every October fifteenth for the following calendar year. So, this just is, I guess you'd say a technicality, this just rolls over our basic franchise agreement with MediaCom for the twenty nineteen year now. Without other changes.
Pretty much buy in another year until we can figure out what we want to do with the Cable Commission.
And I think that's a good decision. I think there's a little more involved than what we initially thought and I think with some of the staffing changes that are happening within administration, I appreciate that, so we'll be much better able to determine what we want to do and how we're going to be responsible for the programming and different things that are associated with going on our own if we choose to do so in twenty twenty.
There was a thought about whether the school might be interested in participating and we got, I think, somewhat of a negative response on that, so.
It wasn't real positive and enthusiastic, yes.
Not only that, but if last year was, I don't know how to say it, a good year for Arlington with the grants and hopefully if I can work with Annie to maybe work another one in for the city, we're just about getting close to a push of what we pay versus what we get back. And if we can continue to do that, I see no reason to leave. But that's if we can continue to get those grants approved, but they've been pretty good about it.
Need to keep coming up with ideas on how we can, how we can use this.
I worked with Annie Lastis last year and they got some new stuff and I want to talk to the library about maybe sending in two instead of one. I don't know what will happen, but I want to try.
Okay.
And I want to see if Annie can come up with another proposal for nineteen to get those funds again for whatever equipment she could use. Cause I'm sure, reasonably sure they'll approve that.
Tom, would, would, would that, would we ever qualify for putting together a promotional Arlington video? Would that be something that the, to play on the G P channel?
I could shoot pitch it. There's always a chance. And when I've done the stuff before, they've been very receptive.
Okay.
So, I'd be sure willing to try. We can sit down, figure something out and I'll, I'll present it.
Okay, we'll talk.
And I'd say that there's probably seventy-five percent chance probably it would get approved.
Okay.
So, the dollar amount, I don't know about, but even if they said they want it sixty percent, sixty percent of whatever beats zero by sixty percent of whatever.
Why don't you introduce this resolution since you're our cable guy?
Okay, I will introduce to, or I'll make a motion to approve resolution sixty-three dash twenty eighteen, extending the term of the cable franchise granted to MediaCom Minnesota LLC, MediaCom.
Second.
Okay, the resolution was introduced by council member Hattlested and that resolution is sixty-three dash twenty-eighteen extending the term of the cable franchise granted to MediaCom Minnesota LLC. Any further discussion? Hearing none, vote by rule call, council member Batchor.
Yes.
Council member Cowell.
Yes.
Council member Hattlested.
Yes.
Council member Ryszewski.
Yes.
Council member Highland.
Yes.
All in favor and none opposed, the resolution is adopted. And next is resolution sixty-four dash twenty-eighteen approving transfer of funds.
Council members, this is a resolution to go ahead and authorize, uh, transferring funds with the, uh, approval of the, uh, two thousand and eighteen, uh, capital improvement plan at our previous council meeting. Uh, this is simply authorizing money to be transferred, uh, to different accounts. So, as you can see, we've got forty thousand going from the general fund to the two thousand eight equipment certificate. We've got eighteen thousand three hundred and forty-five from the sewer fund to the two thousand eighteen equipment certificate. Uh, we've got forty-three thousand seven hundred and eighty-two and thirty-five cents going from the two thousand fourteen electric improvement construction fund to the electrical fund and then we have a hundred and forty-five thousand going from the general fund to the two thousand eighteen capital improvement. So, typically these are approved, um, after we approve a, uh, capital improvement plan for the, the city. So, this is money that has been previously budgeted for transfer and we're just doing it now at this point.
Just for clarification, the first two items are the, is that supposed to be two thousand eighteen equipment certificate or two thousand eight?
Uh, that's supposed to be two thousand eight.
In both, oh, two thousand eight.
That's a good point, I believe.
I was just wondering if it was a typo or not because the others all are two thousand eighteen.
Yep, I do believe that we did pull, what we're, we're pulling money to pay that certificate.
To pay that certificate.
Which originated in two thousand and eight.
So, in both cases?
Yes.
The sewer fund also?
Yep.
Uh, well, I'll introduce resolution sixty-four, twenty-eighteen, uh, resolution transferring city funds.
Second.
Okay, um, council member Batchor introduced resolution sixty-four dash twenty-eighteen. That is a resolution transferring city funds who was seconded by council member Cowell. Uh, any further discussion, questions, comments? Hearing none, vote by rule call, council member Hattlested.
Yes.
Council member Highland.
Yes.
Council member Cowell.
Yes.
Council member Ryszewski.
Yes.
Council member Batchor.
Yes.
All in favor and none opposed, the resolution is adopted. Moving to unfinished business, approver deny parks recommendation on the purchase of four picnic tables for Four Seasons Park. This is something that we dealt with last meeting and, uh, bringing it back to you again with some clarification. I think when it was presented previously at either the last me, I think it was the last meeting or the one before that, uh, it was stated that the, uh, tables were to replace wooden tables at, at the Sportsman's Park. Correct usage is that it's going to replace damaged and broken, broken tables at Four Seasons Park. They are asking the council to reconsider on the purchase and this is something that was in their, the parks budget for twenty eighteen.
Well, last time I was under the impression that, I was under the impression that it was, um, uh. Sportsman's Park and those tables out there and all the tables were in good condition. So, this is definitely a game changer, I think, if the, the picnic tables are damaged and it's, um, I was just out at Four Seasons Park last week and I did notice a couple of tables that had some pretty substantial damage to them, so.
I, and I don't know what the city policy is, I went out and looked at those tables today. One table, there's three of them with pipes with wood on top and one of them, the two brackets, it's real wobbly from end to end because the two brackets are laying on the ground and if they were screwed to the table, that would probably cure that situation. And the other two wooden ones each have a bad board.
This is at Four Seasons?
At Four, I went down there today.
Okay.
So, my question is, of the two wood ones that have a bad board, and bad, I mean, there's a piece missing, so there's a possibility you could run your hand on there and maybe get a slipper, okay? So, a person could replace those two boards and paint those tables. Of the pipe ones, two, there's three of those, two of them, you can grab them, they don't wiggle, one of them does, there's a support bracket that goes from the legs up to the center, they're laying on the concrete. I don't know why they couldn't be reattached with a coat of paint, I, I'm not sure why.
Well, one table.
At three thousand dollars, I mean, to be real honest, I would paint those, clean them down and paint them for five hundred dollars. What are they going to last, five years with epoxy paint on them? Six years, seven years, or do we want to spend three thousand just so we have tables that look alike?
Well, you have, the wood tables and they're out of public park that people don't take care of, no matter how much you want them to, they're going to fall apart again. You know, these, these tables are, they're metal, they're sturdy, they're not, nothing's going to happen to them.
I know, I just have a hard time throwing away tables that could be easily repaired.
I think if there is something that, they have mentioned about something, if something needed to be repaired, they would repair it and bring that down for additional tables at the Sportsman's Park because there, there is room, lots of room for additional tables down there.
And where in Sportsman's?
Sportsman's, Sportsman's, so they try and get all of them matching at Four Seasons.
Well, I know that, I know. They're going to repair those tables that are there.
I don't know, Kirby, would you, is there, are you aware that some of those can be replaced or repaired, I mean?
Yeah, uh, so, the ones at Four Seasons, you mean?
Right.
Yeah.
And I think the concern was then if they do get repaired, they would like those taken down to Sportsman's for additional ones and put in the new ones at Four Seasons so they would look nice.
I know. Well, I know the one table that I seen down there, the, uh, the bench portion of it was all, it was a metal table or a, uh, aluminum table, the one side was pushed up and there was sharp edges or whatever, the one I, I noticed when I was down there looking. That was just one and that was just the bench one.
At the park board meeting, um, a week or so ago, we checked, uh, Four Seasons Park and the tables, well, Kirby said that he's found them stacked up two, three, and how kids get them up high, I don't know how they're.
They're wood, they're light.
No, these are the metal tables that they, and so, they're leaning, they're, they're bent, they're, the tubing, um, is way out of kilter, there's one like a rocking chair that they've, um, jumped on or whatever and, um, the park board was very upset that the city cut out the, the picnic table out of their budget. They felt that was something that they could count on each year, um.
Well, like I said, I mean, I was under the understanding that it was to replace tables out at Sportsman's Park.
That's what it was.
And it was not to replace tables at Four Seasons Park and it was to replace tables that were in decent condition. So, at that point, that, my answer was no, I'm not going to spend money on tables that are good. However, if we're talking about replacing broken tables or replacing tables that, um, we can move a couple more out to Sportsman's Park, the wood ones, then I would be okay with that.
I left the meeting with, that we were, that we had here with the same impression. I thought that they were going to, because they were, the wooden ones were aesthetically pleasing, but the rest of, the rest of the committee felt otherwise, the park committee. And they, their ultimate goal was to have the same tables at all of our parks for continuity and, uh, as the wooden ones wear out or were rot out, then they would get replaced, but there aren't, not all the tables that were in poor condition have been dealt with yet and I don't know, Kirby, will you, if you can make the ones that are damaged? Now, I don't know how, I wouldn't know how to go about leveling them up because they're like, kids were jumping on them until they, the seats or the, they had, the table was actually angled like, like this from abuse.
Well, I think those.
That's the one that the two brackets are loose on underneath.
No.
And it's sitting at an angle because the brackets are broken.
Was that the white one?
It's a white-legged one with a red top, sitting on south wall.
That, that one, I don't know, we've, we knew that that one's there and that's not one that is in the plans for keeping for a longer period of time. I, you know, I understand what you, um, are saying about spending the money, I'm just, that's what the bo, uh, the park board feeling was, is what I'm relating to you. Is that, that they were smoking and that their tables.
They were, they were, they were not a happy game.
But I, I mean, I do understand too that we put in some cameras down there and I know it's reactive and not proactive, but if these kids are whoever, maybe, you know, destroying the tables down there, at least we have some kind of, um, you know.
Catch them eventually.
Well, yeah, we'll be able to catch them or at least, it, it might not stop it from happening, but, but at least maybe we can get restitution, um, for some of the picnic tables that it does happen to in the future moving forward, so.
Anything, Jim? No? Anyone wish to introduce a motion?
Well, on behalf of the park board, I'll make a motion that we, um, purchase four more tables, um, the, the more sturdy ones that Kirby found.
There was, uh, there was something in our packets anyhow, the low bid, is that bid from, not Kirby built, but the other one. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Uh, motion by council member Ryszewski, second by council member Highland to purchase the four picnic tables for Four Seasons Park, does somebody have that number?
Global Industries, twenty-nine eighty-three.
Twenty-nine eighty-three, forty, yep. Global Industries, two thousand nine hundred eighty-three dollars, forty cents. Is there more, more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no?
No.
Motion is carried, uh, by a vote of four to one. Okay, uh, new business, approve the city's grant application through the Laura Jane Musser Fund.
Council members, in front of you, uh, you should find, uh, packet of papers, uh, Choose Arlington, two thousand nineteen rural initiative. Basically, this is a grant request that, uh, Amy Newsom has been working on. It is seeking five thousand dollars in grant money. Matching dollars are coming from the city by way of paying for Amy's salary. What she is looking to do is to work with local businesses, government and organizations to identify a location for new business and identify a source of funds to pay the rent for the business for the first year. She'll be identifying partners, uh, for additional incentives such as marketing package from the local newspaper and website assistance for the new business. The city and EDA will be working together to outline the parameters of this program. This is basically being taken from a similar program that the city of Hutchinson, EDA director, uh, has running up there. Obviously important to the city of Arlington is what happens to our businesses on Main Street and this is an attempt to, uh, recruit a new one or to help an existing business to continue to be on Main Street. So, at this point, there is, at this time, there is no specific business that has been identified, but that will be part of the process if awarded the grant is to, uh, identify a business that needs this assistance.
So, it's a matching grant?
Correct, we are putting our money, uh, in by way of paying Amy Newsom's salary.
So, and then are we gaining more hours of Amy or are we just paying for the salary that we already pay Amy?
Correct, we're just paying for the salary that we're already paying.
So, we can use that as a credit towards the matching funds?
Correct, yeah, so there won't be additional hours, the only additional will be five thousand dollars to use towards this program.
That almost sounds too good to be true.
Is five thousand for the business, including, is that part of the five thousand Amy's salary or is that in addition to Amy's sa-salary?
In addition to Amy's salary, so the city will continue to pay her, uh, the regular salary for the hours that we're getting right now, uh, and with that time she will then be awarded an additional five thousand, which will go towards helping this business to either relocate onto Main Street or to stay, uh, on Main Street. So, it could be attracting a new business or it could be helping a business that is currently struggling to.
So, right now.
Where do I apply?
Yes, that's.
You have to go to Main Street.
Oh. It's kind of a no-brainer, Jim.
So, but, so with this though, it potentially is going to maybe increase the hours that she's working here, right, or not?
No.
Well, it's, it's shifting her focus to this more so than the other thing she's doing or?
I just see it to be included in her duties or what she's doing now, I would think.
That's the way I understand.
She's doing that already.
Yeah.
Well, that's what I'm.
Yep.
I think basically what she's looking, what she needs is the support of the, the port, support of the city that the grant is, you know, aiming at.
Amy's still going to do what she does, but we're going to have five thousand dollars extra to.
Help somebody.
Okay, for her.
Somebody, yeah.
Work with.
Yep.
I'll make a motion to approve the city's grant application for funding through the Laura Jane Musser Fund.
Second.
Motion by council member Cowell, second by council member Hattlested to approve the, uh, city's grant application for funding through the Laura Jane Musser Fund. Additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no? Motion carried. Item thirteen, approver deny request from Phyllis Crayler in regard to the, um, scarecrow field.
Council members, we received a letter, uh, which I will proceed to read to you, uh, to the mayor and council city of Arlington. We are requesting permission to use a section of Memorial Park from south of the flags to north of the flower garden on the east side of the park to display our annual scarecrow field. Due to the remodeling of the medical center, they are using the site east of the car wash for helicopter transport. The dates would be October eighth through October thirty-first. We would make sure to have eight-one-one mark any buried cables in the area. We would make sure to have eight-one-one mark any bur- buried cables in the area. Sincerely.
Phyllis.
Phyllis, Phyllis Crayler.
She does a great job with that.
Yes, she does.
And there are a lot of people, cause what I had it across from me, there's people stopping there all the time with their be- with the little, with their kids to go up and take photos. It's a good deal. People really do use it.
To keep it on holiday five would be nice.
Yeah, where their proposal would be right on the highway.
I think it'd be a great spot just with the flags on the north side of the park to the flag garden, which is kind of in the center. There's a open area.
That's sort of a triangle there.
I've kind of worked with Phyllis over the last couple of years, helped her lay things out and pound posts and um figure put about twenty posts in the ground and hopefully maybe a few more. I think it'd be an ideal location, right on the highway, parking often in the side streets and it just attracts a lot of people.
Yep.
It does. I'll make a motion to approve the request from Phyllis Crayler to utilize a portion of Memorial Park um for the annual scarecrow field. October one through thirty-one.
Motion by council member Batch, or second by council member Yashewski, to approve the request from Phyllis Crayler to utilize a portion of the Memorial Park located, located south of the flags and north of the flower garden for the annual scarecrow field, scarecrow field, October first through the thirty-first. So, it is starting soon, tomorrow morning.
Soon we get the green light.
Soon as you get the green light. I'll hold the flashlight if you wanna go start pounding posts tonight.
Ben and I are gonna have a beer while we're doing that.
Just discreetly over at the corner.
All in favor say aye. Oppose no? Motion carried. Okay, then the item is, item next is the one that was added and it's regarding the um televising the lines at Chandler and Sixth at four hundred eighty-five dollars an hour.
As you will remember, council members, we had discussion about this at a previous workshop. At that time, we were concerned about trying to do something with regards to the, what was the cause of the sewer backup. We had identified several things that there may be a cross connection in that area. Uh, we also talked about having uh some pump inspections conducted to determine which properties may be putting um uh some pump water into the uh septic system. And uh one of the conclusions that we came to was that we would like to address this problem as soon as we can. But yet we have a significant project uh laid out, probably a couple of years down the road. And so, the thought was if we were to go ahead and to televise, that hopefully we could identify exactly where the cross connection is. We could really target and focus our efforts on addressing that at less expense than what a future significant project may cost, so. We had people services get some different quotes, which Lee has then provided to me by email. You can see the one costing the least amount was American Environmental at four hundred eighty-five dollars an hour. I have had some discussion with Jason about this. He's wondering, one of the questions that he brought up uh is do we want to just uh look at doing this small project? Or is there an interest from the council at, you know, starting to work and plan towards doing that bigger project in the, in the spring, early in the spring?
What bigger project?
Uh, taking care of some of the water that currently uh is getting in back there between Good Sam's and the park uh and trying to do kind of a bigger improvement project in that area. Not one that would just isolate the cross connection, but one that would be more significant.
Well, we have a couple of projects that are kind of on the front burner now, right? I mean, that's a problem area and down by Baker Street's a problem area. So, I mean, I guess I don't know what the bigger priority is or, or what the streets committee, where the streets committee is on that.
I would-
I mean, that's a huge, that's a lot of money that. I mean, I know that it's important to try and take care of. I wanna take care of everything right away, but projects are limited.
I think we should just concentrate on this for now and get this, especially if you read farther that they're available this week and they can do it and they can get it done.
We gotta find out where the problem is.
But the televising should do it.
Right.
I thi- I think we, you know, we have to, I think we ought to the citizens to check this out, especially the ones that have sewage backing up in their basement. If we live there and our sewage was backing up in the basement, we may be looking at this differently than rather when we, I know it's some money, but we might open that up and find our problem. We may not. Sooner or later, we have to.
Well, I think with the smoke tests and if we start doing some televising in that area, so we kind of have it narrowed down where we believe the problem is. And once we get the cameras in there, hopefully we would be able to see something.
I would agree.
Whether down on Chandler and Sixth or Seventh or-
Well, right, and it's already narrowed down. So, I mean, even though, I mean, I look at these numbers and I think, oh my gosh. It's gonna add up really fast, but we already have it narrowed down quite a bit.
Yeah. So, yeah, it's pretty narrow for now. I mean, to me, there's no reason that, that we would have done smoke testing if we didn't wanna do this part.
Yeah, then we shouldn't even have done the smoke test.
That's right.
Yeah.
Cause then we're st- yeah.
But I don't think we need to get bigger now. I mean, I think just let's concentrate on this and get this done and worry about the rest of the stuff later.
At least listen.
Figure out what our priorities are.
Let's find the problem.
Right.
Who would see how severe it is.
Who would coordinate this? In other words, you're bringing in another contractor. If you have smoke testing that was done and uh, I mean, does people service coordinate it and oversee it? That, that, you know, that they let this company know where that spot is at where the uh smoke was an issue?
Correct. Yep. People services would go ahead and they would uh have them come in, they would run, do the televising. They would jet the line first clean out and then do the televising. And then that video would be made available for Jason to review and then he can-
Okay, cause-
He would still have access to all that information.
Okay.
But people services, through their contractors, the services they provide to us.
So, we aren't cutting Jason out of it completely. He would, he would be very involved in making sure they, they're looking in the right spot and if they find something that, you know, that he's made aware of it.
He would review the footage of the televising.
So, we're gonna look in the sanitary sewer in that area and the storm sewer? Or are we just looking in the sanitary for a cross connection?
I thought they were talking about going up the line where it was smoking or whatever, where they could see smoke and go up and around and everywhere in there to see if pumps are coming in, to see what the, what it looks like, if there's damage or broken. That's what my understanding was from one.
Well, they introduced this, they introduced the smoke in the sanitary sewer. And then if there's a problem, it comes out of the, of the storm sewer.
Correct.
That's my understanding. Yeah, that's, I think that's right. So, in that area, there must have been a spot where there was an open sanitary sewer.
There was five, six, seven pipes coming into that one area, wasn't there?
But that one, at that one intersection, that was the spot, spot where the smoke came, correct?
Right by the hospital.
Where they wanna televise that.
Yep, yep.
Because they know that there is a leak down there.
They just don't know how far.
But the televising should tell us that.
Yep.
That should tell.
Then we know, because we can't go to anybody to fix it until we know what our problem is. And right now, all we know is we have a problem somewhere below.
And we don't want them digging up the whole street. We don't want, we don't want to dig exactly where the problem is.
This televising may give us that answer.
Sure.
And it may not be as expensive of a fix as we're fearing. We don't know until we televise.
Well, I, I don't wanna make the project huge, right? I don't wanna, like Jason was suggesting. I think I wanna stay away from that. Let's see what's going on.
I think Jason's suggesting the street project, you know, the old Brooks and Chandler.
Yeah, I mean, that's-
Like, because there is issues at Good, Good Sam also, and that can't be ignored.
I understand that.
But it might be such a thing if we find out that ninety percent of that problem is that intersection. We still do our street project. We can take care of that project. Of course, we have to wait for bids to see what it's going to cause. But we don't necessarily have to do a whole street project to address that one issue. We can address that issue so that those residents over there don't have sewage backing up in their houses.
No, I agree with you.
I, I, quitting now, we just wasted the money we spent smoking testing.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think that's right.
And I believe it will take, in talking with Lee, uh, I do believe it will take about a half a day. So, I assume that between the digging and the televising, I think they are doing more than just-
For two thousand dollars?
One mine.
It's gonna be expensive.
Two thou- three thousand dollars?
Four, five.
I'd plan on five till you're safe.
Oh, five, five hundred dollars an hour.
Figure ten hours, they could run into problems.
Probably.
When they come back and say they only did sixty, we'll be happy.
Right.
We won't be if we figure four and they do eight.
Oh, no, no.
But we should, in the end, we will have some answers. And I don't know how else we're gonna get those answers short of doing the televising. And then at a minimum, when citizens, if we get a big rain and they have sewage backup, at least we can say, well, we did the smoke testing, we've done the televising, we're doing everything we can. I don't wanna tell them, well, we could have done that, but we decided not to.
Yeah, we don't wanna start digging up-
So, the sewage runs in your house, well, we'll worry about that two and a half years from now. And that's not an answer we wanna give a citizen.
No, and I think the sooner we make a decision on this, the sooner, the sooner they can get digging and get it fixed.
Yep.
You know, before, before the ground freezes up, so.
I'll make a motion that we um approve American Environmental um to come in and um camera inspect lines in that area of uh where we had the smoke testing done and there were issues.
Chandler and Sixth, I believe it was, yeah.
I'll second that.
Motion by council member Batch, or second by council member Hattlested, to approve the hiring of American Environmental to deal with the televising, the sewer lines, sanitary and storm sewer lines near Chandler and Sixth Street at a cost four hundred eighty-five dollars an hour. Additional questions, comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Oppose no? Motion carried. All right. Council committee updates.
Library.
Library.
Um, looking at maybe getting Chrome boxes to replace the computers. That might be something for the-
There you go.
The commission. I think she was talking about applying for that.
She has just a few on her, oh, well, pardon me, I think the grants were put in Don Doc Doctor already.
Yep, alright.
After our last meeting, so I think that grant is now in.
Okay. Uh, seventy kids started the summer reading, twenty finished. They hired Lexi Stock recently and she's been doing great. They've had a mentor work in there for MVAC. Some school kids from St. Paul's, the circulation's up, the second's in the whole group, only the winter up. And I mentioned the bats earlier and then hope they were gonna work on the bids for the carpet. And uh, that's about it.
Did we get that wiring uh?
The wiring is all, they're all gone, yep.
To the back, it was sort of unsightly in the other place.
Yep, that's all done.
Good, good.
Par- park board, uh, we, it was our semi-annual tour of parks. We started at Sportsman's and looked at the grounds over and we're looking at running a, there was a line from a water source to the backstop for players to drink and to water the field uh that disappeared. And they're gonna try to, Bob Thomas and Kirby are trying figures, something else is how to deal with that. A, a large topic of discussion initially was the dog park. And they're absolutely against it because um of the mess. Who's gonna take care of it? Who's gonna keep up with it? Kirby cuts grass and it's all full of dog doo-doo. You, you have, give, have bags to pick up the mess, but kids will pull them out and you got bags, all plastic bags all over the town. People don't take, aren't responsible for their pets. And where's it gonna be located? Who's gonna pay for it? So, there are just a multitude of questions. Uh, and who's gonna work, work it to make sure things are, gates are closed or whatever? So, they have a, a real problem. They talk, then we went to Four Seasons Park and there was a lot of damage there. The picnic tables were abused. The soffits under the new building again were damaged with hockey sticks maybe or a basketball. But there must have been five or six um spots that probably will have to be replaced, cause you can't bend them back into place. Positive on the Lion Center, since the remodel, it's been rented more and so that's a, a good thing. And so, uh, the park board's recommendation is not to do a dog park unless we can find people responsible to, to make it work. Then we, we ended up at the Memorial Park. The gazebo looks great. And the, the flower gardens are wonderful. Wire hydrant, or the water hydrant will not be installed till next year. They're just running out of time. The, the shed for equipment, um, the school fuel and campus uh classes are gonna still fix it. They just haven't uh gotten that far.
That would be for the Sportsman's Park though.
Oh, that's right. That's right.
They're almost done.
Yeah.
Also at Sportsman's Park, the uh, they are going to get by without a new uh, new bleachers. They'll either put in uh new boards, but they'll paint everything and make them look good. And they're less than three feet high, I think.
I think so.
Which is within the rules for uh safety. What else? Bleachers and the drinking fountain. Oh, and, and as they were walking around the park, they, where the scoreboard is, they thought it would be nice on the backside to have sportsman or an identification of some sort. And so, Bob said he'll look into uh what it might cost and or who we could get to donate it. And then there was a special guest that showed up with, I personally think is a wonderful idea. It's Chris Lillienthal, graduate of Sibley East, uh, graduate of the University of Minnesota. And he, at one point even taught in the ag, some ag classes for the university. But he's in the business of taking exotic animals. And he set up a display at the Minnesota Zoo this past year and is going to do another one for them next year. And when he's not using the display, he's maintaining the, the animals on his dad's farm. And what he's saying, if he's got the animals sitting around, we, he'd be willing to let them, like, like have a deer park like there is at Sibley Park in Mankato. And we could have his exotic animals in Arlington. It's a little something that would make Arlington stand out and might bring people to town. The zebra, he would have, he'd have a camel. He says one thing he doesn't have is a peacock, but he'd like to get that, but, and uh- But, and uh some of them, you, you do, the kids would be able to feed. Uh so he's, so he came with no ideas, other than the fact he's got these creatures. I got them, I gotta feed them, why not share them with this city of Arlington? If, in some way, and right now he's open to any ideas, so what he was asking of us, if we come up with some ideas you know, share them and we'll see what we can work out. I don't know if, there was no discussion on cost to the city, but he's gotta feed them. And it's his business, so there may not be a cost except for a place to let them roam. A, 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 a good natural habitat would be at the end of the trail at Sportsman's Park through walking, you know, having them in the woods. Uh we'd need some kind of a, a fence on that, but.
Think it'd be in the dog park.
Yeah.
I think he was talking about acquiring some property beyond the south border of the Sportsman's Park, which is now farmland. And putting up a building there for the animals, but then incorporating the presence of that building with what's already at the Sportsman's Park, a parking lot. Um you know, picnic area, playground, so families that would come to see the exotic animals would also be able to use, you know, use the Sportsman's Park also. Just a something that's in its infancy as far as thought now and, and uh wondering what, you know, what he might be able to do there.
And anybody who knows Chris is very enthusiastic about things. He's a hard worker. And he'll, he'll get the job done. Very self motivating.
Maybe you'd like to bring a couple of animals for display uh during the Arlington.
I guess.
Uh he can't, because Arlington Dazzle couldn't make up their mind if they wanted him or not, and so he got booked somewhere else.
Yeah, that's right, he was saying it, wasn't he?
Okay.
Any other reports?
Just wanted to share with you that uh we received news that we did get the Prairie Lakes Arts Council uh grant. That was a request that was submitted uh by Sabrina, one of Amy Newsom's helpers. Uh we were looking for some funding to assist with putting that um um winter picture of Main Street uh on a mural on the wall here, so we were awarded uh one thousand one hundred and seventy dollars from Prairie Lakes Regional Arts for uh having that picture put together so that it can be posted on the wall out here, so.
I believe that was the total cost of the picture, if I remember right. Installed, everything, just to look like the other, the other ones here. Same company that did the other ones that are already up on the.
That's a good deal.
Cool.
That should go up, they know we want it up before Arlington Dazzle, so. Hopefully that'll happen. Any other items?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Third.
Motion by Councilmember Batch, or second by Councilmember Hattlestead to adjourn the meeting. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Meeting adjourned at eight oh five.
Wow.
If only it could have been six minutes early, we would have really broke our record. Before eight o'clock.
I barely get home to watch.
Post-actual meeting and done before the meet and reset something of a record.
If anybody has their uh uh committee meetings uh. Okay, thank you.
Oh, six percent.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Six percent, yep, yep, we just want to be six percent.
And they made note that Adam wanted twelve percent. Since he wasn't here, they said they could keep it six.
Five minutes? Was it five minutes or three minutes?
Ten minutes.
That's what we're gonna work towards for all future meetings.
That's right, so we can have a beer while we're having our beers.
So we went for a cruise in, in the Trans Am. Over in Glen Lake, but not.
Glen Lee.
Let's go to the Golden Nugget for a meal.
That is. Yeah, oh yeah.
Oh my gosh.
Those burgers are.
You remember the old Golden Nugget?
Yes, I do, when, yep, I do remember that. Where you could barely walk.
Oh, yeah.
It was tight, people were crunched in those little booths.
But. Place seat, two hundred, two hundred and fifty?
Okay, I, yeah, it's.
It was full, ran away twenty minutes.
Really, wow.
But, oh my god, I don't know what they do, but.
They are good, well, they're, they're, they were rated uh one of the best places in the Twin Cities to have a hammer.
I mean, I like Lions Tap, but these are almost a little better.